Meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees held here on November 13th, 2023, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is Call to Order. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item three is Public Comments. No comments tonight? All right. Item four is Superintendent's Recognition. The first one is Jamari— members, we need to come in front of the dais now. Jamari Thrasher, he's fourth in the nation, EBLA.
You'll just stand in between Dr. Ott. Yep.
You're fourth in the nation.
Tonight, we are thrilled to recognize Temple High School junior Jamari Thrasher, who recently—as in like this weekend— no, four days ago, four days ago, five days—three days ago competed in the Virtual Business Challenge in Management for FBLA. We are delighted to announce that he secured an outstanding fourth place—is that right? Nationals, right? Which qualifies him to go to the National Leadership Conference. The Virtual Business Challenge in Management is a rigorous competition that tests participants' skills in strategic management and decision-making within a simulated business environment. Jamari demonstrated exceptional proficiency in navigating the challenges presented, showcasing not only his individual talents but also highlighting the effectiveness of the education and mentorship provided by our FBLA program, which is our Future Business Leaders Association program. So, the great news is—it's great that you got fourth place in the nation, but the great—really great news is you're only a junior, so you'll be back with us to compete again next year. So, Jamari, for your accomplishments on this and your—and the hard work. This is extra and in addition to what you do on a day-to-day basis. And so, just the amount of time and energy and devotion you gave to this—you represented us so well, and we are so, so very proud of you. Thank you for making Temple High School look so good.
Well, first of all, I want to thank our sponsor, Adam Duval, here, who just started this program last year. And so, within a short period of time, starting the Future Business Leaders of America Association, we already have someone who's fourth in the nation. I want to thank Jamari for not only your hard work but how you represented the school district and the high school, and look what's happened. I talked to your fan club here, and they said you locked yourself in the room for a long time and didn't come out. They didn't know if you were alive, but you were prep—you were preparing for this, and you've done a fantastic job, and we wish you the best in the next round. And I would ask, could you introduce your fan club here?
First off, I would say all praises to the most high. First off, we got Marcus, Shamar, and then there is Marion, Mama, Asha, Bree, and Malia.
Well, we are very proud of you, and as I said before, we wish you the very best, and keep charging, keep up the great work. And we gave you a Superintendent's Medal here, so you'll have a bigger one when you win the national championship in the spring. So, all right, congratulations. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah. I told Mama she could take as many pictures as she wanted, so we'll—we'll let her get her—get her camera ready.
We would like to thank you.
Yes.
Well, we know it's a team sport, so we thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing.
Absolutely. We're gonna take one more picture. Yeah, Mama, you're—you can go in the picture. We're gonna take one more. Yes, one more. All right. We so appreciate you guys. Mama, she said that they weren't gonna stay because they had homework to do, so they're going to go ahead and head home so that they can get that done.
Mayor Tim Davis and City Manager Bren Myers. Would y'all please come up?
Careful planning and preparation is key to successful project implementation in any business or entity, but when the effort brings entities together and from across the community to be involved in those long-range planning processes, the results are nothing short of extraordinary. And the city of Temple has masterfully demonstrated how to coordinate with other—with our school district as well as others in order to maximize opportunities for our students, families, residents, and taxpayers. Working in tandem on projects creates a synergy that generates across the community, and the collaboration builds momentum as we all are working together towards the same goal, which is excellence for our community. Just a few of the examples of how the city of Temple has worked with us on some joint projects—the Travis Competition Field, Emerson, Woodson, the infrastructure to the three new school sites—the two elementaries and one future middle school, the Barnhart Road Improvements, 31st Street Project, the Wildcat statue, the Panther statue, CTE Automotive Internships, New City Leaders Program, and the list just goes on and on. The city of Temple has demonstrated a commitment to supporting Temple ISD that is really unparalleled and invaluable to our district and to our community. And for that, City Manager Bren Myers and Mayor Tim Davis, we are delighted to present you with the Friends of Temple Wildcat Award.
Bren and Tim, just want to say thank y'all so much. I mean, this—the partnership has been a game changer for us and our community. The things that we accomplish together make the community so much better. And we could go own and own about the collaboration between the two of us, but it really—it's paid off for everybody. And again, it's y'all's leadership that made this happen, y'all and the council. So, thanks so much. This is definitely well worth it for y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, bud.
It's very nice of y'all. Thank y'all for thinking of us. Great team, great collaboration. Y'all should say something before I do, because you know I've been talking for a long time.
Ladies first.
Well, I just—I echo the—the great partnership that we enjoy here between the school district and the city. It's just been a pleasure to work with the school board and with Bobby and just love all of the great projects that we've been able to do. I think it's—one of my favorite things to say is that good governance works together. It's when we work together to make sure that we're accomplishing things for our community, for our students, for our taxpayers, and it's just been a joy to work with this team. And this is just—these people surprised us, and I almost cried, and it's just—I think I actually did cry, if I'm being honest. And it's just a—a great honor, and and thank you for recognizing our partnership in this way.
Yeah, I want to echo all the things that Ms. Myers has said. One of the great things that—that I enjoy the most about my time as mayor is that we're building a community. We're really doing something different here, and we're doing it quickly, but in so many ways, I'm confident that we're doing it correctly. So, you know, obviously, the city of Temple, we—we have our role to play. The ISD has their role to play, and we play it—we play it well. And I think the most gratifying thing is that—that we're playing it together to—to make a difference in—in our children. You know, my—my wife worked—actually, my wife served on this board for a number of years, has worked for TISD. My daughter works for TISD, and my daughter's here raising our grandchildren here, you know, in Temple. So—so what we're doing is—is for generations to come. It's very gratifying. So, thank y'all.
And somewhere already mentioned, but I want to thank your families, your husband, Blake. I want to thank Hannah. I want to thank Jennifer for sharing Tim and Bren with not just the city but with the school district and—and all the different partners. When you see the two largest governmental public service entities working together, that equals progress in a community. It really does. It equals progress in a community. And you have seen that in the last several years. And I'll tell you, in my mind, this award is—it's actually overdue. They have done a phenomenal job in working with the school district. When we hit a wall, they bring creativity to the table. We figure out a way to get it done because we're all about serving the community and our students and families, and they do a tremendous job. So, thank you Bren and Tim for your—for your leadership, what you've done not just with the city but how you've partnered with all the different entities to—to make sure that we are moving forward. And that's what it's about. It's about putting people in the best positions to be successful and improving a community, and that's what they're doing, and they're doing a fantastic job. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, we're ready, ready. Come on.
Coach Bob McQueen is synonymous with Texas football, but a detail that is often overlooked is that he did not just coach the Wildcats. He was and always will be a Wildcat. Coach is a proud member of the Temple High School graduating class of 1956, which he made—made sure to tell me was in that old building over there. And he also attended Bentley Hills Elementary, Reagan Junior High, and then, of course, Temple High School. Coach's sweetheart for 64 years, Regina, is patiently waiting for him in heaven, but the couple raised three children—I'm sorry, yes, three sons, Mark Scott and Kyle, and daughter Amanda, who is with us tonight, all who have been incredibly successful in their careers and in expanding the family legacy to include eight grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren—I think was my count. It's close to that. Amanda—Amanda says it's close. After graduating from the University of Tulsa, he returned to Temple and began his coaching career at Lamar Junior High. After a stint in the college coaching ranks that looked—that he looks back on as one of the great—a time of great professional growth, Coach could not resist the opportunity to return home in 1972 as the athletic director and head football coach of his Temple Wildcats. Back home, he led the program for 28 years and accumulated two state titles and a .759 winning percentage before retiring at the end of the 1999 season. Coach McQueen earned numerous accolades and awards during his unprecedented career, but these accomplishments are not what endears him to Temple. It's—in—it's his impact that he's had on the lives of the players he helped turn into successful, productive, moral young men that solidifies his legacy in our community and far beyond. Perhaps Coach McQueen was ahead of his time, and he should be credited as one of the original life coaches, because he was as committed to teaching players as much about life off the field as he was about growing them in the sport itself. For Coach, it was always about the kids, and they knew it, and they still do. We have several in here with us, but in the overflow room, we want to recognize those who are watching and listening in there as they came tonight to celebrate Coach McQueen. If you ever meet one of his former players, you will absolutely know it. And how? Because if you ask them where they went to high school, they will immediately say Temple High School, followed by, "And I played for Coach McQueen." You never have to ask because they are so proud, and they will tell you. In fact, his former players are really the reason that we are here today. It's been nearly 25 years since Coach McQueen officially coached a game at Wildcat Stadium, but it might as well have been yesterday as far as his players are concerned, because the impact he has had on their lives is still very real, and it only grows stronger in time. Coach, for all the reasons that we've talked about and so, so many more, we are truly honored to have you in our Alumni Spotlight. So, thank you.
Well, if you want to see the definition of family, you could just walk over to the room right next to us, where we have so many—and some of them are in here, obviously—so many former players and coaches that are here. And I said in that room, if there was a Mount Rushmore in Temple, he would be on it, for sure. I promise you that. But when you heard him speak to his former players and coaches, the very first thing that came out of his mouth, he said, "It's not about me, it's about you." And that is true, but it starts somewhere, right? It starts somewhere. It starts with some—it starts with someone that people can look at like a mentor, like a father figure, like a teacher, like a caring adult, an educator, a coach, a counselor, all those different things. And the one thing I will tell you that everybody has in common that was a former player and teacher for Coach McQueen is they have a little piece of him in them, and that is a fact. And that's why they all come out and show up for him. Thank you for what you have done for Temple, for the community, for children, for the program, and what you continue to do. We are just so grateful that you landed in Temple, Texas. Thank you so much.
I want you all to know that Kenneth Davis and his lady is in the room—or in the room. If you don't know, Kenneth was an All-American. Hey, Dave.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here, bud. And all the rest of you, y'all mean so much, and it's just priceless. And—and this deal, Bobby, started with a dream by a ninth grader who had a coach that was his hero, and he got to coach football and fish, and I thought that was all there was to it. And seriously, that's—I had the dream for a long time of coaching at Temple High, and I drug my family all over the state trying to build my base, prepare me to do the job, and got to coach against all the great Longhorn teams and Arkansas teams and all those other other people—Oklahoma, Michigan State, Tennessee, you name it. And anybody's gonna learn a little playing against people, coaching against people like that. But anyway, thank you so much. We are so blessed. I hope you realize how special this school district is. These people right here, they're amazing, the things that they're doing. And it's—it's happening everywhere to every kind of kid. They're preparing them for the world, and that's what school—that's what education is about. I promise you, and they are doing a masterful job. My byword, cutting edge, right?
Yes, it is.
Cutting edge, cutting edge. One last thing. We lost a great lady, Allison Dixon. Her motto, "Don't want easy, just want possible." Think about it. Like I always told the kids, the last thing before they went out on the field, "Good luck, God bless you, we love you."
Our next agenda item is our Alumni Spotlight, Coach Bob McQueen.
Can we do a selfie, Coach? A board selfie? We do this all the time without you guys. Sorry, we're including y'all this time. Yep, you have to get together. This is very special.
This has changed the dynamic of the board.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Ronnie, one. Yeah, we're all in. One, two, this has to be my head. One, two, three. Okay.
A, Consideration for Recommendation of Director of Career and Technical Education, K through 12.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, and Board of Trustees. The interview consisting of Ms. Crystal Batrial, Mr. Stephen Bishop, Mr. Adrian Lopez, Ms. Yvette Bradford, Dr. Grant Ermas, Dr. Jason Mayo, Dr. Renata Rogers, and Dr. Lisa Adams interviewed five candidates for the position of the Director of Career and Technical Education for K through 12 on Friday, November 3rd of 2023, and selected Ms. Sarah Bartlett as the lone finalist for this position. Ms. Bartlett is currently the Dean of Academies in Waco ISD, where she coordinates programs of study for CTE to include student certifications and work-based learning opportunities for students. She also organizes and leads an advisory board with business and industry partners for the benefit of the CTE program, and her previous educational experiences include that of a classroom teacher, a counselor, lead counselor for intermediate and middle school campuses, and counselor for CTE. Ms. Bartlett received a Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies from the University of Texas at Arlington in 2005, where she graduated magna cum laude. She earned a Master of School Psychology and Counseling from the University of Mary Hardin Baylor in 2007, and she currently holds her principal certification as well. Ms. Bartlett has been married to her husband Brian for five and a half years. They have four children, Mackenzie, Tanner, Elizabeth, and Catherine, and she has one of her children here tonight. Ms. Bartlett is excited and grateful for the opportunity to serve as the Director of CTE. She's looking forward to growing an already thriving CTE department as well as building positive relationships with all of our stakeholders. She also looks forward to her own professional growth in this position, and so it's with great pleasure that the interview committee recommends Mrs. Bartlett to the Board of Trustees for consideration of approval for the position of the Director of Career and Technical Education.
Members, this does require our approval.
I move for approval.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same side? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Just approved.
Yay! I love it.
Thank you. I'm not sure how you can follow Coach McQueen. Those tears, nobody prepared me for that, so. Thank you, Dr. Ott and Temple Board of Trustees, for giving me the honor of being here this evening. I am blessed to be accompanied by part of my family, my husband Brian and daughter Catherine. I'm a small-town girl with country roots. I was raised in a small 2A school district and given the opportunity to play every sport they offered except for tennis, and I still do not understand all of those rules. I learned the FFA creed and how to sew a straight line. However, a limitation in my 4x4 graduation plan was having access to additional career exploration opportunities, as these were the only K programs available. My father is a hard-working man, starting out as a stock clerk for a plumbing supply company that many years later he would own. My father's highest formal education is his high school diploma. But with hard work, industry certifications, and a relentless desire to learn in industry, he was able to provide four post-secondary degrees for our family, allowing us to not only—not to have to rely on loans. I mention this because this exposure to industry is exactly what CTE provides to our students and work-based learning works. Whether our students are headed directly into the workforce or onto college, the foundation principles of CTE are beneficial for all. Temple ISD is blessed to have a strong relationship with business and industry partners. I plan to continue to extend and promote these relationships to benefit the students of Temple High School as well as benefit our local partners by supplying well-trained and prepared students. I'm honored to be here this evening and to be given the opportunity to lead your thriving and high-quality CTE program and serve the students of Temple ISD as well as the Temple community. Thank you for your time.
Item A, Bird Creek Neighborhood District Plan, Aaron Smith for the city of Temple. Welcome.
Or welcome back.
Thank you all. You're not tired of me yet.
Not at all.
I just so love coming to these board presentations. I can't tell you all enough. I always leave here feeling more proud to not only work but live in Temple, so thank you for having me. So, this is our Bird Creek District neighborhood, a very meaningful. Couple of us live there, so that was a fun part of the job, but as you know, we have several different neighborhoods that we are focusing on, and this is one of many. So, we start out, of course, you know, showing you all the purpose and the mission, and as you can see here, it involves many different members that become our—that are involved with our neighborhood team. We have several different departments involved. I do want to—I haven't done this in the past, but I'd like to introduce a couple of our neighborhood planning team members here today. Nancy Glover, Director of Housing and Community Development, and Belinda Garcia. She is our neighborhood navigator, absolutely phenomenal. She gets us through the entire process, just really leads the charge in developing these plans as well as creating a lot of the plans moving forward in the neighborhood. So, here is the Bird Creek neighborhood, as you all can see. This basically shows a lot of our access points to the neighborhood. So, you can see, we have a park in here, Kiwanis Park. We have two schools, TISD schools in here, Bonham Middle School as well as the Cater Elementary School. Oh, I was doing well clicking. Oh, too far. I was doing well clicking, oh, too far. So the neighborhood is generally at the corner of the Loop and I-35, as you can see there. The southern part is Midway Drive, and then to the east is Oakdale Drive. So this neighborhood planning process is always very extensive. We reach out to the community to obtain feedback from residents and business owners within each of the neighborhoods by surveys, as well as hosting a kickoff community event that was held at Kiwanis Park. Belinda actually planned the entire thing, and we received a lot of feedback from the residents in the neighborhood. We also meet with a variety of focus groups, one of which was with TISD. Dr. Ott was there, as well as several different educators to provide feedback to us. We also assemble several different stakeholders to serve on the external planning team. And thank you as well to Kent Boyd and Shan Gowan, who served as team members on that and helped us with the neighborhood plan throughout the process. We do an NPD news edition. This is something that we started several years ago, and it's helped us get the word out about the neighborhood plan and then to also get feedback. So we put that out during the comment period, where we go over the entirety of the plan to obtain feedback. And the feedback was due last Thursday. So now we're assembling those comments and getting that all done. We also held a neighborhood engagement event last Thursday at 6:00 PM at Cross Church, which is located in the Bird Creek neighborhood, where we invited several different residents to come out. We had a food truck, and we all, Belinda, Nancy, and I, presented the neighborhood plan to everyone, and we had tables set around the room to answer questions.
How was the most turnout like then?
It was great, probably 30 to 40, possibly, or more. It was, it was a lot. It was a rainy, cold evening, so we weren't sure. Belinda had this amazing plan to do something in the parking lot, but of course, I told her, I said, maybe we should plan, you should plan more events when we need rain, because that seems to happen to us every now and then. And then lastly, what we do is meet with boards and commissions, just like you all. So we're meeting with you, I think you may be our first of many. And then we also meet with the Historic Preservation Board, Neighborhood Realization Advisory Board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and lastly, the City Council to provide that information. So moving forward, one thing that we do throughout our neighborhood planning process, and I apologize, this presentation is a little bit longer than your previous ones because we had a lot of analysis, and you'll see that soon. So one of the items that we looked at was the sidewalk analysis. Not a lot of sidewalks along the interior of this neighborhood, but as you can see, we do have some along the exterior at the Loop, as well as Midway Drive, and those are in excellent condition. But what we did hear from the neighborhood residents is that they would like more walkability within the neighborhood, and you'll see that with some upcoming pages. And I don't know why I keep doing that. Okay, here we go. So here is another one. This is our Opportunities and Constraints. And so you can see that that was another part of it. Constraint was really some connectivity that we saw within the neighborhood and the need to access trails as well as sidewalks, but a lot of opportunities for sidewalks as well. So we looked at that within there as well as anything. Then we also have some entry points that you all can see down at Midway Drive, along Gilmeister on I-35, and some other areas off the Loop and Oakdale. I don't know if I'm clicking the wrong spot. Okay, there we go. So Thornton Lane. Thornton Lane is an area that we identified as a core pedestrian round. So what we're recommending here is a sidewalk along this heavily traveled roadway to protect the pedestrians from that traffic. And so you can see that's something that we recommend here. We are also recommending a safe intersection out at El Capitan and Briar Cliff Drive. Want to make sure that there's safe pedestrian crossings so that students and other pedestrians that are traveling to their locations can have that safe access point. Right now, there are no safe crossings, as you can see in the before photo, but we believe that was some signage and some striping, and we can really improve the safety of this intersection. This is something that we thought, there's a, when you turn onto Bird Creek, you can see to the left, I think, there's a very vacant area within this. And so we saw this really as an opportunity. So what we did was is that we evaluated what the neighborhood needs were and talking to a lot of the residents. There was a desire for more, potentially some more restaurants and eating places. So we think this would be a prime location for this vacant area to add some, maybe some flexible retail or neighborhood commercial within this area to provide some more shopping opportunities, as well as a food truck area. This is owned by the Temple Belton Board of Realtors, so it's completely up to them if they do it this way. But this is to provide an opportunity to show them, and we have presented this to them, of how this area could be developed if it was. This is the area that we call our, kind of our transportation planning portion, where we identify all the different roadways and some recommendations that we have for those specific corridors. So the first one here is Midway Drive, which you can see is a minor arterial roadway, so just one level down from a major arterial, which would be the Loop or I-35 or something like that. So what we're recommending are some significant improvements. That would be the full length of the neighborhood plus the area all the way to I-35. So recommending, you know, four travel lanes with a divided median, and then a side path on one side and sidewalks on another side that would be divided through a, what we call landscaping strip, that would provide some safety and that would hold some lighting in there for both the roadway and pedestrians. The next one we have here is a neighborhood collector street. And so we identified Gilmeister as a primary route that you saw in some previous slides. And so showing here, two travel lanes, as well as that planting buffer with a four-foot sidewalk on either side for the pedestrians. This is the notorious Bird Creek Hill. Many of you know this hill. My children love this hill. It is a very steep hill. And so felt like it would be prudent of us to look at what we could do in order to improve the safety of this hill, even though we have heard from many residents in the neighborhood that they all really love the hill. But we would not build roads to that grade now. So we wanted to look at some opportunities on how we could improve those conditions. So you can see typically what would happen there. On A is that you would have a five-foot sidewalk, and then you'd have the two travel lanes. But with this, in order to reduce the grade, we would have to go down into the ground, which would create a division of the sidewalk being much higher. So we have a few options here on the next slide. You can see that there are just a little bit of difference between how we recommended it. So the first one is a 12.5% grade with a sidewalk that is ADA accessible. This is difficult, given the elevation. So you'll see what we call switchbacks. That is where we kind of meander the sidewalk in order to get to elevation that would meet the ADA guidelines. The second option is that same grade, but the sidewalk would be to the back of the curb, so it would follow the grade of the roadway. And then the third option is an 18% grade, so a little bit higher of a grade, still an improvement to what it is now with ADA sidewalks. So you do have some switchbacks as well. This is what we call our pedestrian connector. So we look at how we could create some of that walkability within the neighborhood, like we were mentioning that the residents desire to see. So we show that in the area, the top map in the red. And so that corridor would allow for your typical drive lanes, but as well as a sidewalk where it's possible. Given, you know, budget constraints and things like that, we wanted to look at some opportunities. The streets are fairly wide in this neighborhood, and really, they're not any wider than another neighborhood, but you don't see a lot of on-street parking that you do in a lot of other urban subdivisions. So we see an opportunity where we could really utilize the roadway as something temporary until sidewalks were constructed. And so that could be, the pedestrians could travel within there. And then at busy intersections, you would have this division there with bollards where the pedestrians could cross safely. This next is our enhancement map. This identifies where our commercial edge is, and you can see that we identified there along the I-190 area or the Loop. We do identify the possibility as well on that vacant property that's just north of Bonham Middle School, a linear park opportunity with a trail system. Then you can see some neighborhood mixed use that we recommend along Midway Drive and the Loop, and we'll look at those a little bit closer. So here is where we did our linear park analysis. This area is currently a vacant property, right just behind Bonham Middle School. It's been vacant for several years. And we actually had the property owners, the, two of the property owners for this large tract did serve on our external planning team. So they were very crucial during this process. And of course, they would like to see this property developed. So one thing that we started with is that we looked at the grade of the area. And you can see that the grade of this area really varies quite a bit and is very steep, 20% grade in many areas, making it very difficult to develop. And so, in fact, with Battle Drive, that was one area that we really looked at closely. Battle Drive is a city-owned roadway. However, it has been in poor condition and mostly due to very undesirable soil conditions, making this, really the longevity of Battle Drive just not very feasible or cost-effective. So one thing that we are recommending, as you can see in the next slide, is that we would recommend abandoning that, and I'll talk about that a little bit. So first, though, one thing that we wanted to make sure that we incorporated in here is that linear park space. We think it's important that we would show that, and we could also provide a trail system that connects the interior of the neighborhood to Bonham Middle School as well as to the sidewalks on Midway Drive. So really providing that interior connectability that doesn't exist right now. This next part here, so you can see the, the linear trail that I was telling you all there that would extend up to Renn, and then also go down the Midway Drive and connect to the Midway side path. One thing, as I mentioned, you can see that we're recommending, no longer having the Battle Drive, just because of those soil conditions. But instead, once this property redevelops, there is an opportunity to have road connectivity from Midway Drive into the interior of the neighborhood. And so you can see a future road there that really works better with the elevation of the property and the soil conditions that exist over within that area of the neighborhood. Of course, that will need to be more analyzed, as, further analyzed as they look into developing this property. But that's something that we recommended through our analysis of the grade. A specific geotechnical report would actually have to be done to look specifically at those soils. But we think this is a great opportunity. There is an opportunity for some more residential living within this neighborhood, more of your smaller style, single-family. I'll show you some examples of that on the next slide. Some live-work units where somebody may live up top of their business, whether it's a studio space or something like that, or just an office space. And then an opportunity for some mixed use that would be along Midway Drive, which is a, you know, what you really like to see with a minor arterial roadway. You want to assimilate the density back into the neighborhood where it's lower density. So here are some examples, is what I was telling you, or sharing with you all. With the mixed-use neighborhood center, you can see, it's really a really nice walkable street environment. You have street trees, you have a lot of outdoor dining and merchandising and gathering spaces. And then looking at the live-work, you can see how those could look as well, where, you know, again, porches and stoops are at the front there. You have a shop front, and then someone's living on top of their business. And then lastly, the compact single-family that's just adjacent to the existing neighborhood and very compatible with it. You have smaller yards. A lot of times, this is for maybe young professionals to live in, as well as our aging population that doesn't really desire to have the yard maintenance that some of us are taking on. And so you have a little, a lot more variety in housing types. This is our other area that I showed you all on that previous map, the enhancement map. This is directly adjacent to Loop, the Loop. We think that this is a great opportunity along I-35 to have a combination of apartments, live-work units, mixed use, a nice trail connection. This is basically, this area is divided from the neighborhood by Bird Creek. And so we think there's a great opportunity to have a trail system along the creek side there and provide a lot of walkability for this future area. Did I go too far? Did. Okay, sorry. So then the next one is the Renn Road Extension. We were recommending this as well. We think this would be a great opportunity to kind of just alleviate some of the traffic concerns that the neighborhood residents have, but also an opportunity to provide some back-of-house retail and dining. So as you all know, you know, a lot of the neighborhood residents access the existing shopping center over there, whether they're going to Longhorn Steakhouse or the movie theater. They access it from the neighborhood. So this improvement here would provide better accessibility for those from the interior of the neighborhood. But it also provides an opportunity for the shopping center to have some more retail and dining opportunities, as you can see. And so those would be situated adjacent to that road. We had a lot of conversation with the neighborhood residents, as well as Dr. Ott and some TISD board members about the Cater Elementary site. As you all know, you know, Cater Elementary is a smaller school, really on the interior of the neighborhood. And the service area, you all probably know much more than me, but it goes way far out. Students have to be busted in. And so, you know, talking to the residents, you know, we've informed them that, you know, more of your modern, you know, your newer schools, you know, have a much larger population than they hold compared to Cater. So what we did was is through this neighborhood planning process, we thought it would be a great plan to work with Dr. Ott and look at if, you know, Cater were to ever go away, you know, what would be the opportunity for the neighborhood. Given that this is in the interior of the neighborhood, we feel like the most compatible use would be single-family. So you can see there are three different options that we came up with. We also included a property that's not owned by TISD but is vacant as well. So we think that, you know, you could build just kind of your standard single-family lots, actually pretty large lots that are very compatible, a little bit larger actually than the lots that are adjacent, directly adjacent to the school site, 60 by 150. So it would be a single street with a cul-de-sac. Another option would be a little bit smaller lots, but still relatively large, 7,500 square feet, single-family. And that would provide a looping road with a nice center green that could offer, serve as a play option. And then you can see with both of these as well, there would also be that extension of the trail system that could lead to Renn Road as well, so further providing that trail connectivity throughout the neighborhood. And then lastly, we, we gave an option for a little bit more residential housing options. So you can see that that's a combination of some courtyard homes where, you know, like less yard maintenance, like we talked about before. There's a play lawn area, as well as some of those compact, single-family lots. This is, if you all recall, in an earlier slide, I showed you the side path that we were planning along Thornton Lane and some opportunities here. And we feel like it would be a great opportunity for some more neighborhood commercial, some more shopping opportunities for this neighborhood. So what we would love to see, if that area were ever developed, is situating the buildings directly adjacent to Thornton Lane. So that way, when walking to them, you can walk straight to the front door, and then all of the parking would be shared. It would be located in the rear. Having shared parking allows for cross-access, as well as a reduction of driveways, so increasing the safety for pedestrians and drivers along. And here's just, I love these images. This always brings it to life to me when they do these. So you can see this image here of what that could look like with some nice outdoor seating, the sidewalk path there, some of the nice engaging signage and those beautiful shop fronts. This is our schematic lighting zone. What we do with all of our neighborhood plans is that we look at multiple different lighting areas and what the lighting needs would be in there, and then we identify the zones. So you'll see in each of our neighborhood plans, we identify those key corridors where lighting we think is really needed. Of course, in parks, around schools, you know, areas where we want to make sure that our pedestrians feel safe, as well as our drivers. And then we have some specific lights that would be best served within those areas. One thing that we always focus on as well is neighborhood identification. We want anyone that's coming into the neighborhood to identify that neighborhood as theirs. So we always have neighborhood identification, and that includes monument signage. You can see that on the bottom right there. That would be as you're entering the neighborhood at some of those key intersections that we showed in those red bubbles. That's typically where you would see that, where most people enter. But then also throughout the neighborhood, on top of street signs, what we call street sign toppers, we would add that. And this was a fun one to do, you know, given the name, Bird Creek. We came up with it. Now I have to say, the, the highest, the biggest comment, I think, I heard from the neighborhood was on Thursday, was that we on Thursday, was that we spelled Bird Creek wrong, which I also told Belinda, we spelled Bird Creek wrong.
Was Bird Creek one word or Bird Creek two words?
So.
Because on one side it's one and one side it's two.
The street is one word, but the creek is two words. So they all decided that it would be best to call it Bird Creek and to be more as the creek, because most people identify with the creek. It's been there for much longer than the street itself. So it is spelled correctly. So I let several people know that at the meeting, which I was great, I was great that that was the biggest comment that I heard at that meeting. So then lastly, this is our capital improvement plan. So of course, we do a lot of dreaming on property that's not necessarily owned by the City of Temple, but there are a lot of things that are owned by the City of Temple, such as those key corridors, parks, trail systems, and things like that. So this is our overall capital improvement plan map. This is very crucial. As you all are aware, the City of Temple has dedicated $75 million over the course of the next few years to making, implementing a lot of the recommendations from the neighborhood plans, as well as park improvements. And so what we do after each of these neighborhood planning processes is that we get together and we score all the projects, and the highest score projects, the ones that are, you know, in the most need, rise to the top, and then that's how we are funding them. So we're very appreciative of our council and how supportive they are. Another thing that we're doing, we talked about district identification. We are looking at installing four neighborhoods per year with district identification signage. So we are actually getting ready to put actual signs in the ground and on street sign toppers in our first four neighborhoods, and that's Ferguson Park, Crestview, the Historic District, and the Bel Air Neighborhood. So we're excited to see that. So you'll get to actually see those. And with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Erin, thank you very much. Members, any questions? I know this is Shannon's district, so I'm sure she has a question.
I'm actually wondering about the, I know that some of the streets are graded pretty low in that area. Wondering what the plan is for the actual repaving or overlay of any of those streets, maybe like where people create.
Yeah, we could definitely look at, so what we have here in our capital improvement map, those are the ones that we'll score and we'll put in. But I know we do have a pavement program where we do keep up with our streets, and we look at those continuously and when they do need to be improved. So we can look at those specifically, and I can get you that info.
That'd be wonderful, because there's some spots where it's just dirt coming up.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
So I think it would be a wonderful foundation to have.
Great, will do. Thank you.
Any other further questions?
And I'd just like to let the board know that the Tuesday after Thanksgiving break, we have a planning meeting with Erin and some of the city leadership or administration. And we're gonna go, kind of plan what the joint resident meeting would be like. And I think initially, we talked about it maybe being December, but being that late to give a longer runway to get more participation may be better in January. But we'll talk about the planning meeting. So that's the next step for us in our process, and we're working with the city on that. So thank you.
And that's just another example of us working together, too. So again, thanks for that. Appreciate it. All right.
This is absolutely beautiful, guys.
Yeah. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Item B is consideration for approval and acceptance of the annual financial audit report for 2022, '23. Ms. Stafford.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, members, and Dr. Ott. It is my privilege to introduce Dane Legg with Lot, Vernon, and Company. Mr. Legg and his team have spent an extensive amount of time working alongside Donna Allemann, our Director of Budget and Compliance, and Terry Burleson, our Director of Finance, and myself, to review the district's internal controls, our policies and procedures, and the activities of the district funds, how they relate to the General Operating Fund, school nutrition, debt service, capital projects, and all of our grants, and to ensure that the district's annual comprehensive financial report is an accurate and fair presentation of the financial position for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. So this is truly a district-wide audit, and Mr. Legg is here to present the report.
Dane, welcome again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Y'all should have a copy of each one of the reports. As always, the audit is split into two pieces. One is the annual financial report with all the financial statements, and then the other one is the report with the compliance as it relates to federal programs. I'm gonna begin with the thicker one. This is your 2023 financial report for fiscal year ended. Before I begin, I'm gonna speak of some hardships that we had before getting to this. So I know the business office, before we got to this point, you know, they had some, a lot of turnover, new staff. We had a new GASB-96 that they had to comply with during this fiscal year. We had $100 million bond issue that they had to record and do all the reconciliations for it. On top of that, the first time they're actually doing a close on their own. And I just want to commend Brandy and her staff. They did an excellent job in putting this together under those hardships. I don't usually do that as an auditor, because we're supposed to remain independent. But I've seen this before, and usually I end up telling people, we're just gonna be late, we're gonna have to apply for an extension. But we don't have to do that. This will be submitted on time. But I wanted to commend her and her staff for getting this together.
Thank you, Brandy and Donna and Terry. We appreciate it.
Real quickly, I'm gonna go through the financials, start on page 25. On page 25, this is your independent auditor's report. It is stamped tentative. The only reason for that is the ASBO and GFOA schedules at the back have not been tied out with the extensive checklist that you're required to go through for ASBO and GFOA. I don't expect any changes, any material changes. My responsibility on that is if there are any, I have to communicate to you that, but I don't anticipate any changes in this report. Looking at the financial statements themselves, it's gonna start on page 42. I didn't have time to put a cheat sheet together, but I did highlight the numbers so you can follow me a little better, so. On page 43, you've got the totals for your balance sheet. It's a little different presentation than previous years, because you've got a bond issue and you've got capital projects. So we have several major funds here. I'm gonna spend most of my time on the total column on page 43. Total assets, your first subtotal there, 153.6 million. That is up 99 million over last year. Predominantly, all of that is sitting your cash and cash equivalents, results of operations, plus you did have $100 million bond issue this fiscal year. Next subtotal down is your total liabilities, 19.8 million. That is up 5.6 million over last year. The majority of that is in that first item in that subset, accounts payable of 8.3 million. Capital projects are up 4.1 million as it relates to construction payables. And then your ESER fund had a 1.2 million payable for this fiscal year. Total fund balance, second number from the bottom, 131.3 million, up 92.1 million, again because of the bond issue. If you look over on page 42, the third number from the bottom, that is our unassigned fund balance in the general fund, commonly referred to as your reserve. It's 32.8 million and represents right at four months' worth of operating expenditure. So it does fall in compliance with the board policy of not having less than three months. Any questions on balance sheet? Okay, looking at that 92...
Is this a good time for me to talk about the fund balance?
I was gonna wait until we got to the C3.
Okay.
Okay, looking at that 92.1 million dollar increase in fund balance, we'll look at revenues and expenses on C3, which is on page 46 and 47. Same format with the columns as the balance sheet. Looking at the total column, total revenues, your first highlighted subtotal, 155.8 million. That is up 18 million over last year. The first item in that subset is your local revenues of 80.3 million. That is up 17. Property taxes are up about 9.3 million. Your investment income is up 5 million over last year. You have more money in investments, and plus, the tax rate went to a favorable level to actually make money on your investments. And then your tax increment roll collections were up 1.5 million. The second item there is your state program revenues, and that, as budgeted, that 43.8 million fell 4.9 million over last year. Then the last item in that subset, your federal revenue, 31.7, that is up 5.9 million. The biggest factor in that was a 5.2 million dollar increase in ESER funds for this year. Going down to your next subtotal, your total expenditures, 165.6 million, up 32.1 million over last year. From a functional standpoint, your salary and benefits are up 4.4 million. And then, of course, your ESER money is spread throughout those departments. Then you see the two highlighted items, the second and third, those are your debt payments, both principal and interest. Those together are up about 3.7 million over last year. The next one down, the 19.3 million, that is your capital project expenditures, and it is up 14.6 million over last year with the new construction. And then the last one in that subset, the fifth highlighted item, 13.4 million, that is your payments to the tax increment zone, and it is up 2.1 million over last year. The next subsection there is your other financing sources and uses totals. Fourth number from the bottom, 102.2 million. And I'm just highlighting that the majority of this is the bond issue you see in that first highlighted item, 97 million is the bond issue. And then two numbers, three numbers down is the premium on that to make it $100 million in cash, which gives us our third number from the bottom, that is our 92.1 million dollar increase in fund balance. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dane. So on C3, if you will look underneath the general fund column, about three-quarters of the way down, it's labeled line 1100, excess revenues of, over expenditures. That's the line I want you to highlight on. It says 2.133 million. That is what we added to fund balances last year. We promised the board that we would add $1 million to satisfy policy to make sure that we had more than three and a half months' operating expenditures and fund balance. But then that other million dollars will help offset that 2.25 million deficit budget that we adopted for the 23-24 school year. So your takeaway is that we're committing another million to that. So now we've got to try to make up the 1.25 million deficit budget. And that mainly on this area is because increased tax collections, but also we changed our investment strategies. And we moved them around to the pools instead of leaving them in the local bank and just tried to maximize it by watching it daily. Any questions there?
That was a pretty big jump, what we recognized in the past.
The interest income.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, on general operating alone, we brought in 1.3 million, and last year, the year before, it was only 39,000. So we made sure that we maximized what we could. And interest rates were higher, which worked to our benefit, but it really was our new investment strategy.
Well, thank you for being on top of that.
I think the, and just to re-entice what Brandy said there, well, first of all, I agree, and thank you for being on top of...
And thank you for being on top of that, and, because that is a huge delta between $56,000 and what we've earned now. But the other piece, I think the big takeaway is, when we adopted the budget before, it was a 2.2 deficit, and now we're looking at a million less than that. So if some other things maybe go through, and we have good attendance and those kinds of things, we're close to our enrollment number, I think, how many, eight students off on projected, something like, was it eight? Eight students off? 28? 20? Okay, 20 students off. But I think attendance will make that up, because we projected attendance in a conservative way, I believe, the attendance percentage. So I think if we take all that and consider it, you know, we may have a, may have an opportunity to get even closer to zeroing out at the end of the year, so.
Any other questions on revenues and expenses? The other side of the audit is the compliance side. We have a nice bound copy labeled "single audit." Anytime you receive over $750,000 worth of federal aid, you have to go through a federal single audit, compliance of the whole federal system. On page six, there's a nice summary of that whole section. Flip to that page. Item A deals with internal controls as it relates to the financial statements. It was an unmodified or clean opinion with no findings. Item B deals with the federal warrants required to be tested for this fiscal year. It's also unmodified or a clean opinion with no material findings or audit findings, no audit findings and no material weaknesses. The section right there on the, about halfway down, identifies your major programs for this year. Title I, it was their turn this year, and of course, ESER is required to be a major program, no matter what the amount is. You literally have three programs that you have to audit at least once every three years, and that's Title I, Special Ed, and Child Nutrition. So that's, it was Title I's turn this year. Just to keep you informed, next year, Special Ed is on the hook. So Special A will be a major program in fiscal year '24. I do consider it the hardest one to comply with, so it is, it is good to know that ahead of time, because it does have a lot of intricacies with its compliance. But you have passed, you have had a favorable audit report in the past for Special Ed, and I expect it again. There at the bottom, low-risk auditee, because of the unmodified opinions, you do qualify as a low-risk auditee, which goes into the data collection form with the feds, and is important in getting additional grants. Any questions on compliance? One more report. It's labeled "Board of Trustees." It's thick, but I'm, I'll be quick. I am required, as an auditor, to answer certain questions to the board as a result of my audit. So if there were any disagreements, consulting attorneys, things of that nature, I would have to highlight in this report. All of the answers are of a favorable answer. On page two, about a third of the way down, we do identify that there was a new pronouncement, GASB-96. We did have to record your software leases in a different manner this year. I don't anticipate anything in 2024, other than, I think, because of the copier leases coming in, you're gonna have to do the leases next year, which will be a little bit of a hurdle, and I think you may even have a couple other software leases that come into the mix. But I'm assuming you're gonna use DebtBook again, and they have made it pretty simple for most districts, so. And then the only other thing to add is on page four, it starts, I have to communicate what the audit adjustments are. Keep in mind, on page four, I know there's a lot of, but most of these are to create the full accrual financials at the front. They are not pure audit adjustments there, just financial statement adjustments only. Unless you have any questions, that concludes my report.
Thanks, Dane. Appreciate it. Members, any questions?
Thank you, Dane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so this does acquire approval?
I move to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Gallin.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. The ayes have it. It is approved. Thanks. Item C is future items discussion. Any items you wish to discuss at a future meeting? Okay. Item D is important dates, and Dr. Ott? Item D is important dates, and Dr. Hott?
Since we're nearing Thanksgiving holidays, I don't have many here. I just have the Board Policy Committee, November 29th, and then the Board Facilities Committee, the 30th. You do have an additional sheet that has a pretty healthy list of fine arts activities to attend as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Item seven is consent items. Items A through F2, what is the pleasure of the board to hear these items?
I move that we approve item seven, A through F2 altogether.
Basketball goal for Kennedy Powell?
Under consent.
Are you looking under action items? Yeah, that's further down, yeah. No, that's right. So motion by Mr. Gaines.
And I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same motion opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item 8A1, Board Resolution to Adjust District and Student Calendar and to Make Whole Contractual and At-Will Employees During School Closure. Dr. Ward.
Good evening, Dr. Mr. Posey and the board. Almost gave you a title there. So, yeah, that's a good one to give, yeah. So I bring to you tonight a resolution to adjust our district and student calendar and to make our contractual and at-will employees whole. As, as you, as you know, we adopted a deficit budget this year, and we were hoping that the legislative session would support public schools and add to our funding, and that did not happen. And so we're not able to give a retention bonus payment this year to our teachers. And so, so we're asking that December 15th, which is typically a half a day for our students and staff, to make that a holiday on our, our district calendar. And so along with that, because that does change the contract days that our employees are working, we ask that you make them whole. And so that's what this resolution is seeking.
Members, any questions? I appreciate y'all coming up with this way when these challenging times to reward the folks who make all this happen for us.
Well, thank you. Because we know, you know, Temple ISD is blessed. We've started the last two school years fully staffed. And I believe it's because we do take care of our people. This is taking care of our people, and it's taking care of all of our people, right? And so it helps with our retention. We were talking about retention the other day, and I think we've improved 5% over the last year. And so I think our P E N S data will show that we had an 18-ish percent turnover rate, which hasn't happened in a long time in Temple. And so, you know, it's little things like this that, that make a big difference in the morale of our, of our staff.
This does require approval?
I motion.
Motion by Mrs. Cook.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? The ayes have it. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support.
Item B is B1, 2024-2025 High School Catalog. Dr. Rogers, welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Hott, Mr. Posey, and members of the board. I am here just to take a few minutes of your time to review the summary of changes to the high school catalog for the 2024-2025 school year. And so I won't go through all of these in detail, but you'll see we have a new lead counselor at the high school and some new counseling staff. And so they really took time to go through the catalog. And so there's several just updates to information that I'll be making in the catalog. T E A made changes to the course names for P E, and so I'll be making changes to reflect that. Our special education department had foresight to see that, that we've not had students who are deaf or hard of hearing at the high school in a while. They see that as kids are matriculating, we're about to have some more. And so they are aware of this course called Navigating Life for Students with Hearing Loss and want to provide that to those students so that they're able to be successful and advocate for themselves as they venture out after they graduate from high school. And so this is a great, excuse me, opportunity for those students. So we'll be making that addition to the catalog. For fine arts, we're removing AP Music Theory, and I don't want you to be alarmed that we're removing an AP course. And speaking to Ms. Lotzbeach, she said that the, the topics that are taught in AP Music Theory are taught in other courses, and that colleges and universities generally are not accepting that credit even when students get the score to get credit. And so it makes sense to just remove that offering. And then music appreciation and art appreciation are also being removed. We just have so many students that it's not, it's no longer a budget-neutral course to have on our schedule. And then finally, for C T E, we are adding banking and finance and Money Matters, and the purpose of that is really to make sure that our students have the appropriate courses to fulfill the accounting pathway as they prepare for college and career military readiness. And so that concludes the summary of those changes for the high school catalog. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. I will be back next month to look at middle school changes, and I hope y'all have a nice Thanksgiving.
Looking forward to it. Yeah, thanks. Item C1, Consideration for Adoption of Resolution Approving a District Interlocal Agreement with the City of Temple Change Order 1 with Cloud Construction and Professional Services Agreement with K P A, all related to improvements to Barnhart Road and Old Highway 95, Little River Road. Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. That is a long title for this, but exactly what the attorney told us to put. As you are aware, district and City of Temple leadership have been, recently had multiple discussions on ways to try to expedite the construction of Barnhart Road and Old 95 Road, both around Sampson Howard. So tonight, we bring to you documentation that would effectively allow for the construction of the roads to be transferred from the city's contract to the district by placing that contract under the district's G M P for the, the total Sampson Howard Construction Project. So in your documentation, you have four specific pieces tonight. One, a resolution that, that allows this to occur, should you approve it. Two, an interlocal agreement that is with the city that, that would allow us to transfer that responsibility effectively. The third piece is a change order to the G M P, which would be specific to our arrangement with Cloud Construction. And then finally, a professional services agreement with K P A, because they're, they have been and will continue to be the entity that has designed and will oversee the project at that level. While this action will technically increase the G M P, the city will still pay for the entirety of the construction of the roads on a pass-through basis with Temple ISD. In addition, the, the city will maintain primary oversight and approval for the work. No district funds will be expended, and although the district will administer the contract, no district personnel will be responsible for the daily direction of the work or changing of the scope or anything of that nature. And finally, the city has agreed that they will indemnify the, the district for any costs incurred should any legal challenge or suit occur on the project. We don't anticipate that, but as with any project, that is still their responsibility at the end of the day. The desire with all of this is that we can expedite this project and the roads, in such a manner that the roads will be ready for school early in the fall of 2024. May not be at the beginning of school, but sometime during the fall, as opposed to what the city had originally projected of being sometime in the spring of 2025. Will be opening in, in August of 2024 for students, so that's the significance of that to us. Do y'all have any questions on that? There's a lot of detail behind here that, that you've seen in your books that a lot of people have worked on, legal counsel for the city, for Temple ISD, K P A, cloud, the district, the city, a lot of folks have been involved in this, STANTEX. So it's, it's had a lot of pieces to it, and we feel comfortable bringing it to you tonight for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boyd. Members, any further questions? This does require approval. I know Ms. Waters, you'd be abstaining tonight from the vote.
I'll make the. Approve.
Motion by Mrs. Ms. Gallin.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it with one abstention. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
D Finance, D1, Consideration and Action With Respect to Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Temple Independent School District Tax and Revenue Note Series 2023, Authorizing a Pan-Age Retristar Agreement, and Authorizing Other, Other Matters Related to the Issuance of the Note.
Hello again.
Thank you.
So we have discussed the proposal of a $3.5 million maintenance tax note to be issued for the purpose of athletic stadium improvements. Those improvements that we've talked about are stadium seating, press box renovations, adding a press box on the visitor's side, restroom and concession stand renovations, and stadium vacate improvements. In order to do so, we bring to you tonight a resolution authorizing the issuance of the 2023 tax note and to award the winning bid. It is my privilege tonight to introduce Jennifer Ritter, who is our financial advisor with specialized public finance, and Angela Avila, our bond counsel with McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton that have advised our team every step of the way. Through this process to make sure that we select the best financial option for us for this athletic stadium improvement project. Ms. Ritter is here to present the bid process, and Ms. Avila is here to answer any questions you guys may have regarding the resolution.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here. So we've got a very, very brief presentation. This was a, a private placement, so unlike your bond sale that we did earlier where we got a rating and official statement and offered it all over the country, this was a competitive process, but it was local banks, or nationwide banks, actually, who are being, being given the option to, to purchase this maintenance tax note. So just a little update in terms of interest rates. You guys certainly sold your $100 million at a better time. Since then, interest rates have continued to climb with action by the Fed to fight inflation. They've come down a little bit in the last week and a half since the Fed meeting, but we're still at relatively high levels. Here, this green line is a 10-year history of municipal bond interest rates. We're on the far right-hand side. That graph there says that only 19% of the time in the past 10 years have rates been higher. So we're at a pretty high point in the market. So this was, again, as I mentioned, a competitive process. About three weeks ago, we sent out a term sheet to banks all across the country, gave them the opportunity to bid. We said as a maintenance tax note, we were looking for a 15-year option. Because of where interest rates are, there's not a lot of banks at the moment who are willing to lend 15 years, but we'll talk about that here on this slide. So we actually did receive bids from five, well, four, four banks with five different options. As you can see here, there actually were essentially three of them who did bid a 15-year option. Those top three, AMAGY bid 10 years, and then they bid 15 years, but there's a reset in the rate after 10 years, so I'm going to call those, those two AMAGY options technically 10 years. But you can see the rates range anywhere from a 4.8% all the way up to a 5.4%, so certainly higher than what we're used to seeing. But that's why when we look at the, the far right-hand column, it says call features. A call feature is the ability to prepay this, should it be that you've got lower interest rates, which is certainly possible that that might happen in the next 15 years, we could refinance this for savings. Or it might be that you collect a little bit of extra revenue and simply want to pay this off early. That call feature allows you to do that. So for example, the Extraco bank bid there at the top is not callable, so you'd have that outstanding for 15 years. So even if the rate had been lowest on that, we probably wouldn't have recommended it because of that lack of an option to either prepay or refinance. And that kind of brings us down to the, the highlighted one there, Huntington Bank. They did bid a 15-year fixed rate term. Interest rate comes in at under 5% at 4.94%, and they're giving you the option to prepay it anytime. If it's before 2032, you have to pay a 2% premium to prepay it. After 2032, it's just if you're paying off $100, for example, it costs you $100. But at least in, in both cases, you have the option. It's up to you if you want to pay it off early or not. So that would be our recommendation because it's the lowest interest rate, the one below. It looks lower, but again, that's a 10-year rate. This is a 15-year rate. So that's why this one is lower. And that last one, again, AMAGY, just as a reminder, it's 4.94% set for 10 years, but then it will reset to market terms in another 10 years. So we don't know what the last five years would end up to be. So, and just, for example, the interest rate does make a difference. Huntington came in at 4.94%, Extraco there at the top at 5.1%. We ran it just to see what the difference was. That relatively small 16 basis points, a 0.16% interest rate higher Extraco has, equates to about $52,000 in extra interest over the life of the issue. So having that lowest rate does make the most sense for the district. So we went ahead and just plugged it in, what that looks like in terms of annual payments. It's about $335,000 a year, again, fixed for 15 years. You do have the option to start to prepay it at any point here. And then the last page, just showing you where the, the money is going. This is a issue of $3,545,000. 3.5 million is going towards your project fund, and the additional, call it 44,000-ish, is going toward issuance cost to pay our fee, bond council's fee, the attorney general's fee, the bank's attorney's fee, the Texas MAC. A variety of different fees are added all into that line, but you are still getting the 3.5 million for the project. And then that $649 there is because we have to sell in $5,000 increments, so that's a rounding amount to keep it at $5,000 that comes back to the district. You can either use it in the project fund, or you can use it to pay debt services, up to you. So assuming that you decide to move forward tonight, we would be in a position to close, which means the funds would be to the district on November 30. We moved closing up a little bit because there were some, some changes that were happening in state rules, essentially with banks that started on December 1st. So just to avoid any issues, we went ahead and moved that up to November 30. And the other thing that we did was having this close in calendar year 2023 means it could be bank-qualified. When you sell less than $10 million in a calendar year, you get a better interest rate. Since you might be selling the remaining portion of your bond authorization next year, which would certainly be more than $10 million, we wanted to get that out of the way, or get this out of the way, so that this wasn't affected by that non-bank-qualified status next year. So this kind of preserved your ability to get a lower interest rate on the maintenance tax notes. So happy to answer any questions. Angela Avila is here, again, from McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton, your bond attorney, to answer any questions specifically about the order of the resolution, but I'm happy to answer any financial questions that you may have. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank y'all both for being here. Members, any further questions? Does, is, is, this is an approval item.
I'll move to approve the item.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. The item is passed. Item two, Consideration of Approval of the 2023 Tax Roll Per Section 26.09E Texas Property
Okay, so according to section 2609 of the Texas Property Tax Code, we've always supposed to have approved the tax roll that Bell County issues for Temple ISD. And so I wanted to get us compliant with this property tax code, so we are going to review it, and hopefully you guys will approve the annual tax roll. Billy White, the chief appraiser of Bell County and tax assessor collector, has submitted the 2023 final tax levy as the tax roll for the review and approval. And so you guys should have in your board packet that tax roll, and it should look like it should say 2023 levy totals on it. On the 2023 levy totals, the first number that you'll see on the left hand, on the right-hand side says net taxable. So Temple ISD has a net taxable value of $6,780,000,000. Going down, though, further, our total levy that we can collect is $74,598,000. And out of that, that's separate, on the left-hand side, there's also going to say tax increment finance levy. This is money that Temple ISD collects and passes through, to the tax increment zone, and that amount is $11 million. If you will go to page two, the next page after that, it does tell you the different exemption categories and the dollar amounts that Temple ISD gives for each exemption. These exemptions can include homestead, disabled veteran, and over 65. The third page explains the different types of properties and valuations that equal the net taxable value that we first saw on page one to equal that $6 billion. That is reflected in the net taxable levy. On the fourth page, though, is the part that I really want to highlight for you guys. On the fourth page, right in the middle of the page, it says increased exemptions. This says increased exemptions value loss. This is what just passed by the voters to increase the homestead exemption from 40,000 This is what just passed by the voters to increase the homestead exemption from $40,000 to $100,000. And so for Temple ISD, that was $575 million worth of value loss, but we are supposed to be made whole by the state of Texas. And finally, the last page, on page that it shows, is the total amount of protests that happened within Temple ISD. We had 677 protests, and so initially, we had a market value of $192 million, and they settled at $136 million. And so all of that affects the tax levy that we go and collect on, and that will also affect our state aid. But all in all, between the two tax collections and state aid, we should be made whole. And so I just need you guys to ask any questions, if you have any, and then we just need to approve it to be compliant with the tax, property tax code.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Not this does require approval.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Cook.
A second.
Seconded by, oh, seconded by Mrs. Myers. I'm sorry, heard it from the wrong web direction.
She made a motion.
Oh, she, did you make the motion? I'm sorry. Motion by Mrs. Myers.
No.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. I apologize. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. E, Student Services, no items. F, Board Committee Reports. One, Facilities Committee Meeting, October 26, 2023. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. The meeting was called to audit at 4:00, 6:00 PM at Hector P. Garcia Library, and the committee approved the, a memorandum of agreement and easement requested for the boundary, for temporary, I'm sorry, request for temporary construction, wastewater lines, and drainage for the city of Temple, where infrastructure improvements near Sampson Howard. Mr. Boyd and Mr. Perez presented an update on the status of each of the bond projects. The committee toured recent improvements at the campus to include the new security vestibles, the new playground, and the, the plaque on Dr. Hector P. Garcia in the vestibule. The meeting was adjourned at 4:47 PM, and next meeting will be November 30, 2023.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gaines. The, item two, the Policy Committee Meeting, scheduled for October 25, 2023, was canceled, and the next committee meeting is Wednesday, November 29, 2023, at 4:00 PM. There being no further items, we are adjourned. Thank y'all for attending tonight.